Good evening. I'd like to call through order on the November 18th, 2020, regular school committee meeting at 5:34 PM. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to enter into executive session to discuss tragedies with respect to bargaining with employee groups and/or personnel matters. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion by Mr. Wilson, seconded by Mr. Stadman, to enter into executive session. Mr. Cutlass, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Demos, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Stadman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. That's a unanimous vote. We will reconvene our regularly scheduled meeting at 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Uh, two. Yeah, Gil and Jamie Scott.
Yes.
All right. Jason, are we ready?
You're also Keith.
Great. Good evening. I'd like to reconvene the November 18th, 2020, regular school committee meeting at 6:01 PM. The November 18th, 2020 school committee meeting will be televised and recorded. This is a virtual meeting via WebEx. Due to the recent open meeting law policy set forth by the governor during the current state of emergency, the meeting will be held as a virtual meeting. To participate, please call in 781-565-8134 and view live through televised cable channels Comcast Channel 22, Verizon Channel 34, or at youtube.com/TuxburyTV. As a preliminary matter, my name is Keith Sullivan. I'm the chairman of the Tuxbury School Committee. Please permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda tonight are present and hear me and give consent to be recorded tonight. Members, when I call your name, please respond on the affirmative. Mr. Cutlass?
Aye.
Mrs. Demos?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Stadman?
Aye.
And the chair affirms as well. Superintendent Mr. Malone?
Aye.
Assistant Superintendent Reagan?
Aye.
Business manager, Mr. Libby?
Aye.
And our student representative, Mr. Jack Stadman?
Aye.
Thank you, Jack. This open meeting of the Tuxbury School Committee is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings and, as per the governor's order, suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not This feature, this meeting will feature public comment to participate during Citizens Forum. Citizens are asked to call seven eight one five six five eight one three four. For this meeting, the Tuxbury Public Schools is convening by Webex as posted on the town's website, which identifies how the public may join. View live through televised channels Comcast twenty-two Verizon thirty-four or at youtube dot com slash Tuxbury TV. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and aired live and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that people will be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All supporting materials that have been provided members of this party are available on the district website or by request. Please email Gail Johnson, G. Johnson at tuxbury dot K twelve dot M A dot U S for a copy of the agenda packet. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless otherwise noted. Following the agenda, I will introduce each speaker. After they conclude their remarks, I will go down the line of members asking each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. If anyone has a common question, it can also be submitted in the chat window and it will be recognized by myself. For any response, please wait until I yield the floor to you. If members do wish to engage in dialogue with other members, please do so through the chair. And for items relative to Citizens Forum, I will ask a member of the public who wishes to speak to identify himself or herself for the record. Once recognized, the member of the public are welcome to speak about any current or past agenda item. Finally, every vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. That's recognition. Okay. I'd like to yield the floor to our student representative, Mr. Jack Stadman. Welcome, Jack.
Thanks for having me back again.
You're welcome.
Uh, just a few short, quick updates. Right now, DEC has been meeting monthly to discuss their new changes to the club. They're currently working on new ways to do their yearly fashion show. Our esports team is back up and running. They've been placing high within other schools from New England in games such as Rocket League. The Team HS Drama Club is working hard on their virtual production of Romeo and Juliet. They hope to be releasing that soon to the public. The International Club has started their yearly blanket drive where members take home, take home and make blankets for kids in need for the holiday season. And the Student Council is holding their weekly meetings. They have been, they have planned spirit days for the upcoming weeks leading up to Thanksgiving. Make sure to remind your teachers to dress accordingly. And as always, the morning update is still up and running. You can tune in every morning on YouTube except for Wednesday. And that's all the updates I have for right now.
Great. Thank you, Jack. Appreciate the update. I'm gonna go over to Jason and ask if we have anyone on the line for Citizens Forum?
No calls, Mr. Chairman.
Great, thanks, Jason. I'll check back in in five minutes or so. Um, at this time, I'd like to turn it over to our clerk, Mrs. Demos, for our approval of minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of October fourteenth, twenty twenty regular meeting.
Second. I have a motion in a second to approve the regular meeting minutes of October fourteenth, twenty twenty. Mr. Stadman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Demos, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlets, how do you vote?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. I'd also like to turn it over to Mrs. Demos for the submission and payment of bills.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move the school department payroll for the period ending October fifteenth, twenty twenty to be approved and certified in the amounts and categories as shown for a total amount of one million, three hundred and sixty-six thousand, one hundred eighty-five dollars and eight cents.
Second. I have a motion in a second to approve the payroll period ending October twenty, I'm sorry, October fifteenth, twenty twenty in the amount of one million, three hundred sixty-six thousand, one hundred eighty-five dollars and eight cents. Mr. Stadman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Demos, how do you vote?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. Back to Mrs. Demos for the payroll.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move the school department payroll for the period ending October twenty-ninth, twenty twenty to be approved and certified in the amounts and categories as shown for a total amount of one million, three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred and nine dollars and forty-four cents.
Second. I have a motion in a second to approve the payroll period ending October twenty-ninth, twenty twenty in the amount of one million, three hundred sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred and nine dollars and forty-four cents. Mr. Stadman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Demos, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlets, how do you vote?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. Thank you, Mrs. Demos, in the final.
Um, I move the school department payroll for the period ending November twelfth, twenty twenty to be approved and certified in the amounts and categories as shown for a total amount of one million, four hundred fifty thousand, three hundred dollars and sixty-one cents.
Second. I have a motion in a second to approve the payroll period ending November twelfth, twenty twenty in the amount of one million, four hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred dollars and sixty-one cents. Mr. Stadman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Demos, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlets, how do you vote?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. Thank you, Mrs. Demos. Uh, quick check in with Jason. Is there anyone on the line, sir?
Call is at the moment, Mr. Chairman.
Great, thank you. You're welcome. Moving on to the superintendent and staff reports, I'd like to yield the floor to Superintendent Malone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just update the committee in the public, uh, specific to the COVID nineteen pandemic. Certainly, we've seen an uptick in the town on total numbers of cases. That's also been reflected, uh, in those cases that affect the schools. Last Friday, I messaged out about five cases in the district. In, uh, this Monday, I messaged out about a separate number of seven, which is certainly a significant, uh, number. Uh, huge thank you to Kelly Constantino, our district's lead nurse, who conducts the, um, any type of contact tracing related to any positive cases and does some diligent work to ensure that those cases are where they originated from. If there are any close contacts, what impact that will have, um, on the school district. With those numbers and some of those things, one of the things we're looking at from central office is likely notifying out weekly rather than, uh, daily just to be able to manage some of those communications and make sure close contact tracing is done effectively. But, uh, once again, an outstanding job by our staff members, our students, all of our personnel in taking the appropriate precautions despite that number of cases that are growing in the town. That had, has proven through contact tracing that they are not originating or spreading in the school district. That is specific, uh, in relation to our staff and students. Making sure they're washing hands, wearing their masks, staying home when sick, making sure they have six feet of difference of distance between each other. And a huge hats off to John Marshawn, the maintenance crew and all the building custodians because of the extensive cleaning protocols that they are enforcing regularly in responding to in particular situations if we do hear of a positive case. So thank you to all of them. Those are all the difference makers in that even though the number of cases in town are climbing, we're not seeing the impact on the schools as far as any type of spreading or any element of that. With the new metrics that were identified statewide by the governor, Tuxbury, uh, is, uh, been held in the yellow category. Uh, specific to that is an indication, though, even the numbers have gone up in town. Our positivity rate remains under two. The criteria to move from yellow to red would be five percent positivity rate or over. So we're holding on that rate. A huge thank you to the, uh, task force, reopening task force, and particularly, the, uh, Public Health Department at Town Hall for working with our school nurses on all of this contact tracing in all of these cases. It's that hard work that's allowed us to make the determinations that, uh, there is not spreading of this virus in schools. And, uh, we couldn't do any of that without that support. But again, uh, we, we certainly do have a concern that the numbers are going up in town. But we're also confident that if we continue to take the precautions that we're talking, that staff and students stay vigilant. Uh, this is our biggest weapon in defeating this virus and ensuring that is not spreading in the schools or affecting our ability to have in-person learning for students. So again, thank you to everybody involved in that. We'll continue to keep the public informed of those numbers as they come up. Once again, I think we're gonna move a little bit more to a weekly notification on that. And, and keep an eye with the task force on any type of scenarios where we can increase, in-person learning for students. And, um, certainly it's due to the hard work of all the staff members that's making that happen and we thank them very much. As an update to staffing, as we talked about numbers overall in Tuxbury, certainly that's, uh, not only in the Merrimack Valley, not only statewide but countrywide. So we're watching those numbers, uh, extensively. And as you can imagine, that also has an effect on staffing in the school district. Typically, on a, uh, at any point during a typical, typical year, we might have around fourteen staff members or about five percent of the staff out on leaves due to maternity illness, other things of that nature. Right now, we're hovering between two and three times that amount out on leave. And we have an even larger number of staff who, because of accommodations in regards to childcare or American Disabilities Act, or have been identified as being in quarantine or isolation as a close contact or a positive test. We're looking at the impact of, of this pandemic on our staffing, reaching about twenty-six percent of our staff daily. Many of them are able to work remotely, which is great and they're doing a fantastic job with it. And I hats off to the staff members that are, despite some of their challenges, working remotely. But our concern is at, at some point, how does that affect our ability to supervise the number of students that are in person daily? So that's a piece we're gonna have to watch closely. Just to give people an idea, as people may have symptoms or a family member who have symptoms or some other reason why they are doing the right thing, which is following the protocol and not coming into work. Typically have between five and eight staff members every single day kind of going through that process. Whether they may feel symptomatic or someone in their family is getting a test preventing them from actually coming to work. Normally, they are working remotely and we, they're doing a great job with it. But again, um, it does have an impact on staffing and this is something absolutely we're gonna have to keep a close eye on. The staff are doing a great job with the instruction. They really are. They're doing fantastic. But we will have to watch long term how this progresses. Just a reminder to the committee and to the community that I had sent a letter out on October twenty-third in regards to, the hybrid model in the remote learning academy and looking at sustainability and equity and other elements like that. We continue to look at those pieces. Uh, we have not made any formal decisions on an approach to that. We're certainly, uh, not interested in unnecessarily disrupting any type student situation or, uh, classroom connections or relationships. We're hopeful that then in fact will not be the case. We're working diligently with the, uh, Tuxbury Teachers Association to see if we can manage that effectively and get creative. And, uh, we have an existing MOA with the teachers' union, uh, which is, which is good. We do think if we can make some adjustments to that, we can resolve this issue and ensure that we have sustainability of the services in the, uh, hybrid and the RLA students moving forward. We'll continue to work on that. We have some ideas on that that would, uh, make that, I, we think, uh, very desirable and, and certainly less disruptive for parents and for students. So we'll continue to work in that direction. We also, uh, had a letter produced by the Superintendents Association that went forward to the, uh, governor's office and the commissioner of education with the governor's and commissioner's announcement that, um, a true expectation that students would be returning to in-person learning full-time, particularly those, uh, districts that are not in the red, which includes Tuxbury at this time. So certainly there is a push from the state level to increase, uh, in-person student learning at this time. Certainly, it's something, uh, we're definitely in favor of if we can do it safely. One of the elements that the Superintendents Association wrote to the governor's office and the commissioner's office is that, um, we're asking for assistance, uh, on evidence that if we were able to do that, to show evidence that less than six foot of distancing would be safe if we were to move in that direction. So we're asking for some, um, data and information that would help us make that. Uh, six-foot distancing is certainly one of the things we've been diligent about. And again, thank you to the staff. And we think that's a, a true success to some of the, the things we've done. So we're asking for some data or information that less than six-foot distancing would be safe. We're also asking for, uh, the governor and the commissioner's office to look at transportation of students and look at how to safely do that with appropriate distancing right now under the transportation guidelines. Uh, we would not be able to bring all students back full in time because they would not be able to manage the transportation elements that go along with that and the current safety precautions that are going on in buses. So we've asked them to look at that aspect. We've also asked from the governor and the commissioner help with the collective bargaining positions, provisions in that most, uh, school districts have entered into memory, memorandums of agreement with unions. And some of those have specific elements that would need to be addressed from that higher level if we were to move in that direction. So, uh, we're hopeful. We've talked about this on the, um, task force quite a bit. And from the Superintendents Association, we've identified some of those elements that we feel we need help on to move in that direction. So, um, we hope to hear back from, uh, the governor's office and or the commissioner's office. As far as some other elements in regards to student engagement, special education department has begun to increase the number of students who are receiving, uh, more than two days in-person services. Originally, the guidance out of D E S E regarded, uh, specific to a cutoff line of those students who received, uh, seventy-five percent or more of their services out of the classroom. We have begun the process to bring that down to students who receive more than sixty-five percent of their, services outside the classroom and provide them opportunities to be in school, much like those students who receive more than seventy-five percent, four days a week of in-person instruction rather than two. So we've begun that process. We're also moving towards looking at all high needs students, not just the special education students, but the English language learners, and how we can increase their time of in-person learning during the school week. So we've had some definite progress on that. We're moving towards that. A lot of hard work done by our Special Education Department, our Special Education teachers, our EL teachers, Dave Libby in Transportation, Kelly Constantino, making sure all the precautions are in place, where we have students now coming in, in some pockets, four times a week instead of two, to make sure that we have appropriate cohorting and contact tracing. So hats off to all those people. It's a big lift, and we've started it, and we hope to have even more success. We're also beginning the process through Special Education of looking at altering home services. Home services have not been taken place for obvious reasons with staff members going into the home. We've looked at an alternative approach to that, where one day a week, we may have students come to the schools to receive their home services, for instance, on a Wednesday, so that we can bypass some of those safety concerns and bring it into a safe environment. We're hopefully trying to get that kicked off as soon as possible. And a big thank you to the Special Education Department, who's run a couple of family engagement activities. One from the Special Education Department around specifically, family engagement happened on the November 11th. Had 45 participants, family participants, take part in that. And again, there's one this evening specific to remote learning to help families with that. And it's a virtual presentation and family engagement from the Special Education Department. And once again, thank you to them. As an update on Chapter 70 funding coming from the state, the budget lays in the Senate at this time. The Senate will be debating that budget going forward. It looks like those numbers indicating right now, as far as Chapter 70 money is, is looking at, is they are debating a number that is roughly the equivalent of what we received in Chapter 70 in FY '20. Typically, we would have an annual increase. Certainly due to this pandemic and other budget concerns, there is a clear concern that there may be a decrease. But right now, what the Senate is looking at is basically a level funding of Chapter 70 from last year. And just as a reminder, a level fund because of the cost of living likely is going to cause us to tighten our belts and look at the FY '22 budget in a way that make, to make sure that we can account for the fact that we may not have that level of revenue coming in. Just a reminder to all families, please be careful in the upcoming Thanksgiving break. We've sent out the statewide travel advisory. We sent that out Monday. Just to remind people, if they are traveling, to make sure they're following those quarantine and testing procedures. Please do not return to school if you have traveled and not followed those procedures. Please contact the school nurse for further information if you run into that situation. And please, during this time, just for all families, please be careful about which cohorts you may be kind of working through in the numbers of family members and other members that are not in your direct contact. Just please be careful. We want everyone to have a pleasant and joyful Thanksgiving, but we want to make sure people are safe, following those precautions that we use in school, being certain in, upon return, if there's any doubt or anyone's not feeling well, please contact the school nurse. With that, I will turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Regan.
Thank you, Mr. Malone. Before we go there, I'm just going to check in with my colleagues for any questions or concerns. I'll start with Mr. Cutlass. Thank you. You're on mute, Mr. Cutlass.
Still on mute, Jamie.
All right, how about that?
There you go.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one question from Mr. Malone, and I know it's talked about a lot. Is, what are the parameters? Like, I know there's a discrepancy amongst the class sizes with the remote learning teachers and the hybrid. Do we have actual numbers on that? Is, what are the highest numbers of kids in one particular class as opposed to the lowest? I know we're trying to address that, but I just don't have a handle on that.
Sure, and it's really kind of goes in pockets, and it depends at the school level where that's at. We have class sizes in remote learning, depending on how they're broken up, that are certainly exceeding 30. And for the most part, our hybrid classes are total numbers typically somewhere in the teens. But again, those are split in half with only half that number actually being in person on any given day. Now, the other half is still learning remotely, and they're still learning from the same teacher and doing the same assignments. But typically, it's about half of those students are in person. So we're trying to make sure we have some equitable distribution of staffing and making sure we have equity in class sizes. The teachers are working very hard. They're doing a great job with it. We're just trying to make sure that we can sustain this moving forward is our concern.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Malone. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That was my only question.
Thank you, Mr. Cutlass. Mrs. Demos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to piggyback on what Jamie said, those remote learning classes that you're talking about that are 30 or above, are they be, are those children being educated by one teacher? Or do we have paraprofessionals in with those teachers?
All of the above, yeah. It's a combination. They may have paraprofessionals in certain situations. It may be individuals team teaching and taking it together to sort of, but it's a lot. It's, and it looks a little bit different kind of in each building, and the teachers are doing a great job with it, but we're
Oh, I don't, yeah.
About the total numbers.
I don't doubt that they're doing an awesome job at that. What I do worry about is early literacy skills in developmental stages of the students in these 30-plus classes. When you're looking at these numbers, are we looking at elementary-level classrooms as well as like high school-level learners who have mastered there?
Yeah, in some cases, it's a little bit, but it's probably more upper elementary and middle school. But, you know, there are some cases where the numbers are larger in the lower elementary, yes.
Yes, okay. Add to that, if you want, Shannon, just briefly, for example, we have a second, I'm sorry, a second-grade RLA classroom of 33 students, where the average of the second-grade classes at that school are 17 to 18. So it is quite significant in a one-teacher classroom to have that versus the other. You know, and in fifth grade and sixth grade, you know, we're seeing class sizes averaging in a typical hybrid, not during the in-person part, in total of 15 students to 16 students for the class, meaning the A and B group, where we're seeing, you know, averages at 30 in the RLA group. So it's a little bit at the younger level. It's definitely in the middle grades where we're seeing the higher class sizes compared to the average class size.
And have we had conversations about maybe dissolving some of the hybrid classes into different cohorts and freeing up some teachers to teach the remote learning to make it more equitable to the students' learning? Or is that something that is?
Conversations around that. I think there's some significant parent concern around that. From, you know, hybrid parents who would be concerned that they have built a relationship with a classroom teacher and feel that even moving on to a different hybrid class, even though the numbers would be manageable, there's some strong concerns around that from parents, some very strong concerns.
Right. No, I guess that's fair. I just, they just were thoughts that were coming through my mind. And I'm wondering if maybe, when we get to that point in the meeting, if it's something we can put on next month's agenda is maybe talking about getting those numbers in hand for our class sizes at each one of the schools for remote and hybrid, so we can make sure that we're making the best decisions according to numbers that are current.
Right. And much of any decision-making typically is going to have to go arm-in-arm with negotiating with
Right. Yep. No, I understand that. Yeah, no, I think that's all I have for right now.
Thank you, Mrs. Demos. Mr. Wilson?
I have nothing at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson, and Mr. Stadman?
I have nothing as well.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Stadman. Two quick questions, Mr. Malone, with regards to the Special Education. I'm very happy to hear that we've kind of, I guess, lowered the threshold from what tests you put out. If 75% more, you're being pulled out, you're in the, you know, you qualify for the four days. We've reduced that to 65. Has that already begun? Is that, are we in the process of doing that, or is that already?
It actually has begun. What we, one of the struggles that we didn't have when we did the 75% students is they had started at the same time as everyone else. So one of the things to think about is if you have a student who's in a two-day cohort and want them to go to a four-day cohort, we have to think about how to do that safely because now we're mixing students from different cohorts, which we know we've been very successful in contact tracing, keeping students to their cohort. So it required a significant amount of creativity at the building level to think about what those additional two days of services would be and who would be providing it. How would we manage the transportation where we have a student who's typically on a transportation two days and is now going to go to four days? It may be mixing with two different cohorts of students. And what kind of precautions may be added to both cleaning for our maintenance people, but also from our medical staff about how to prepare a student for that, whether they may need to actually quarantine before they start the four-day element? So we have just, we've just started it. We have it ready to go at the North Street. We have some elements at the Wynn and the Ryan High School has been doing some pieces. So we're just underway of final planning. What can be difficult is that percentage that people utilize, which is DESE, which is 75% down to 65%, that can be a little bit subjective at times. So we're just trying to find our most needy kids to do that. And with the EL students, it's even been more creative about when, where, and how we're getting them in, how they're getting their services. The sped staff and the EL staff have been extremely flexible about their availability during the school day, when they can manage these pieces, and how they can service these students. It's really been incredible to watch. We wish we could do more. Right now, you know, it's only a handful more. It's three or four at this building and three or four at that building. But if we keep moving in that direction, keep gaining the confidence on the safety protocols, can overcome some of the transportation issues and have space and staffing to do it, we can definitely keep moving in this direction.
Okay. And my only other question somewhat related to home services, and I'm guessing you may be dealing with some of those same issues with the cohorts having the families come to the schools. Has that, is that currently underway, or are we just adding that?
We just had a meet and greet today, so it has not started yet. People have been offered that up. I'm not sure a final list has been determined. One of the things we have to think about, and again, this would be, instead of home services coming into the family, we're bringing the student. The family has to drop off. There has to be a actual physical handoff and symptoms check with the family before the student comes into the building. On a Wednesday, we have to identify areas in the building that are pre-cleaned for the student coming in and then cleaned again once they leave. And then every Wednesday night, we have a deep cleaning of the entire school. So we had to think about all those procedures and process. Right now, it looks like it's going to be a small number of students that are, and it's pretty much individual, one-on-one support. It's somewhere in the neighborhood of 10 students, I think they've identified. But again, these will be 10 students who were not getting home services, haven't gotten home services since the pandemic. And we're hoping that this will be a creative way to provide a service for students who, because of this pandemic, just haven't been able to have it.
Okay, thank you. I mean, obviously, I hope we're working to try and have families feel comfortable that we can increase that number. Do we certainly have that ability to have more home services, I hope?
We can. Normally, 101 so far. Part of it is just trying to have success with a small group off the bat, making sure we're hitting the cohorting, the safety, and the cleaning protocols in place. If we can establish that routine and we have success with that, we can certainly spread that out. One of the pieces we have to be a little bit worried about, for instance, on Wednesday, you know, most of our people that provide home services work for us. They're working during the school day, including Wednesday. So we're probably going to have to look at times after school hours that that may be provided, as long as we can maintain an individual targeted cleaning for those students coming into the building and when they leave and not interfere with our deep clean every Wednesday. We should be able to move in that direction.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Malone. And with that, I would like to turn it over to Mrs. Regan for her Assistant Superintendent report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to start by apologizing. You will probably hear the melodic tones of the old Senate School furnace banging behind me. So the good news is it's working. The bad news is, is I'm going to compete with that noise. So again, my apologies. The first of my updates is from Friday, November 6th. We hosted a staff flu clinic where approximately 80 of our Tewksbury Public Schools staff members conveniently accessed flu shots at the Tewksbury Memorial High School. Again, thank you to Kelly Constantino, who organized the event, and to Michelle Rivera, our Human Resource Manager, the nursing staff, and certainly the high school team under Ronnie Drew, and who set up the flu shot clinic in a nice, safe fashion. Today, November 18th, is the first day of the second quarter in the 2021 school year. Grades and special ed progress reports are currently being done by our teachers. Due to the model of asynchronous lessons, I just want to inform parents, the asynchronous lessons for most of our K-8 specialists, our parents and students will see a different coding procedure for some of our specialists, a 4-3-2-1 coding, and a key to that coding for those classes will be included on the report card. Traditional grades and attendance tracking will be posted for all core content classes, both for hybrid and remote learners. The quarter one report cards and special ed progress reports will be posted digitally and published to the Student Aspen Portal on Wednesday, December 2nd. I also want to remind parents, and Chris brought up, that next week is a short week for the Thanksgiving break. Monday, November 23rd, and Tuesday, November 24th are Cohort A. Both are Cohort A in-person days. I just want to remind parents, we started the school year with two Cohort B days, two Thursday-Friday in-person days. So we've been very cognizant of balancing those in-person days. But so that all parents know, Monday and Tuesday is a Cohort A in-person class day, and Wednesday is an early release, remote day for all students. Thursday and Friday, there is no school. And of course, we wish all of our families a wonderful Thanksgiving break. Parents can also go to the district website and access our dynamic, ever-changing district calendar, and they can see, week to week, as we go through each month, which cohort days are on the Monday and Tuesday. There will be, I think, the opportunity before the December break where we needed to do an A day and a B day. So again, parents are reminded, they can find the cohort days posted on our district calendar. And consent agenda, I also want to draw your attention to our annual emergency school closure information for parents. We've posted this to the website, and you'll see the highlighted section at the top talks about new school closure piece, and this is new. And I'm going to read it, "In the event of school closure due to inclement weather or other, a full remote learning day for all students may be implemented as determined at the district level. Students would follow their regular daily schedule remotely." So, for example, if we have to close schools on a Tuesday, students would start the day as usual remotely and go through their whole schedule on Tuesday with their teacher. We also are cognizant of the fact that, you know, some teachers and students or families may run into internet connectivity issues on bad weather days, and we're certainly working with our teachers to prepare offline lessons in the event that they can't be online with their students that day. Next, in the consent agenda, I've also included our, a little bit different than annual letter from District Attorney Marion Ryan. You know, Marion Ryan acknowledges the challenges we all face in opening schools this school year and the need for all of us to work together and maintain healthy and safe schools for our families. She also, you know, reminded us and includes the annual truancy and attendance information handout for parents and guardians. We are working closely with our families. We realize in a global pandemic, and certainly when majority of student education time is remote, that some engagement and attendance issues are occurring. So, again, we're working closely with our families to support them and encourage families to reach out to their school principal if they need our support in helping their kiddo engage and attend. Okay, and with that, that is my update.
Thank you, Mrs. Regan. I'll just check in with my colleagues, Mr. Cutlass, for any comments or questions.
Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cutlass. Mrs. Demos?
Yes, thank you. Brenda, I just was curious, you know, when we have our no-school announcements broadcasted on TV or the radio, are we going to change what we are saying as, you know, the school buildings are closed or a remote day? Because I think that when the students see no school, they automatically think no work, right? So, are we going to be clear on our announcements out to the public to make sure that it's either, you know, buildings are closed or remote or something in that nature?
Yes, and we've, and Dave Libby can nod and agree with this. We've been rewriting the script that goes on one call, that will get tweeted, and that will get posted, so that it's very clear, because I agree with you. I mean, I mean, most students are happy when there's a snow day. This is an opportunity where we don't miss a school day, and we will save on the, you know, the end of the school year by not having to go in June.
Also don't know how the television and media stations are going to respond to this. As of right now, it would not be something we would notify the media stations of if we were going to remote, because they're doing a no-school announcement.
Right.
Now, if they change their method and are going to begin to announce schools as remote only or something like that for the day, that may be different. But right now, what we're hearing from them is really they're only going to be announcing no school, which would not be what this is. But they may change how they approach it, we'll see.
And I can tell you, Ms. Demos, that the multiple TV channels give us dropdown codes, so we don't necessarily get to put in on the TV what, everything we want to say. What we need to do is hopefully that they're going to add that dropdown code, no school remote day, but we haven't seen that yet.
Perfect. I just wanted to be clear on that, because it was a question that came through my mind while I was reading it, so that everyone is clear. Thanks so much for your work.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Demos. Mr. Wilson?
I have nothing at this time, Keith, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stadman?
I have nothing, thank you.
Great, Mrs. Regan, thank you for that detailed report. I'd like to now turn it over to our Business Manager, Mr. Libby.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Quick update from the Business Office. Like to send a thanks out to our friends at Tewksbury Transit, the drivers and the office staff there. They've been great this year to work with through our very varied transportation needs as a district. We're usually in a preset routine by now with transportation, and this year has been quite different. We've had a lot of changes, weekly, adding students, moving students, changing seats, and the gang over there at Tewksbury Transit has been outstanding, working with us, getting those changes in the hands of drivers, and getting kids to school on time and getting them home in a reasonable amount of time at the end of the day, too. Now, we are at the end of the term. We have a lot more, we have many more changes coming up as students change from remote to hybrid, hybrid to remote, and they've been great in working with us to make sure those changes go smoothly on our big yellow buses and our vans. Update on the budget, we continue to assess our current run rates and current figures and forecast where we'll be at the end of the year and work on our plan for next year. Our preliminary budget is due to the town on the second Friday in January by town bylaw, which is fast approaching. So, just keep that in mind, that we'll be working on those and those numbers and be presenting those to you guys as the, as that date approaches us for the town. And lastly, an update from Food Services, from Deb Mugford and her outstanding staff. They're at a point right now where they're sending home about six hundred meals a day to our in-person students, and another, another seven hundred meals, meal packages are going home on our grab-and-go days on Mondays and Wednesdays. Each of those packages contains three meals each, so about forty-two hundred meal packages are being sent home to the grab-and-go students on Mondays and Wednesdays. They continue to do a great job getting healthy, portable meals home in the hands of our families. And a reminder that all those meals are free this year due to the changes that stepped forth by the USDA, and families should try to take advantage of that whenever they can. That's all I have for you tonight.
Mr. Libby, I'll just check in with my colleagues. Mr. Cutlass, any questions?
Just one, Mr. Chair. Mr. Libby, has the town manager given any guidance, like as to we should level fund our budget or anything along those lines?
He's working on that. His budget letter to departments, I talked to him about that last week. He's finishing up his forecasts and trying to figure out where we're going to be. So, we're expecting that any time now.
All right.
We don't have those figures yet. What, the way we generally work is plan on, you know, level service and what that looks like, given our cost of living increases with our, with our employment contracts, and try to put a price tag on that, and then see where we're at as far as the matching up with the town's numbers.
All right, thank you, Mr. Libby. Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'm all set.
Thank you, Mr. Cutlass. And just a follow-up on those lines, Mr. Libby or Mr. Malone, are the contracts due up soon with our employee groups?
Yes, and I've actually already heard from the Custodian Secretaries Union to, you know, set up possible negotiations for there, but we would anticipate that come January, we would receive that information, that we would, in fact, go into negotiations.
Okay, so that most are expiring and?
They're all aligned, they're all aligned to expire at the end of this year, correct?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Libby. Check in with Mrs. Demos, if she has any questions.
I'm all set. Mr. Cutlass asked my question.
Great, thank you. Mr. Wilson?
I have nothing. I just would say, I'm just so pleased with how it's gone with, you know, getting the kids to and from school, and, you know, that was certainly one of the issues or concerns we had going into it. So, thank you for all the flexibility and making it work, and, you know, it's one of those areas where you're nervous and everything's gone better than expected, so thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Wilson, and Mr. Stadman?
No questions. Thank you.
Great, and the only question I had, I asked, so I thank you, Mr. Libby, for your report. And I'll chuck in one final time with Jason to see if we have any callers.
No callers, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you very much. That gets us to the consent agenda. Do any one of my colleagues have any questions regarding tonight's consent agenda? I'll start with Mr. Cutlass.
No, I'm all set, Mr. Chair.
Great, Mrs. Demos?
I don't have a question, but just a comment. I'm noticing more and more retirements of people that have been in the district for many years coming through our packets, and I just feel like I miss that recognition that we would have for them coming in that, you know, we now can't do in this situation that we're in. And I'm just wondering if maybe we could put something into place to recognize these individuals and the married of others that have retired throughout the course of this COVID by inviting them to our meeting via Zoom to receive their recognition and, you know, maybe mail out their proclamations to them that we would have read and delivered to them, had we been able to celebrate them and thank them for all the years of service to Tewksbury Public Schools. Just an idea, I don't know that, you know, they wouldn't feel as though they needed to come, but I just don't want it to go by the wayside because of the world that we're living in, for them to not have the recognition from us and thanks for their hard work and dedication.
Sure, I agree wholeheartedly. So, certainly, we can get with Mr. Malone and Mrs. Regan, and, you know, actually, we'll first open it up to make sure that's okay with our colleagues. I'm sure it will be. Mr. Cutlass, any thoughts on that?
No, I'm fine with that, Mr. Chair.
Great, and Mr. Wilson?
I am fine with that as well, also.
Mr. Stadman?
I'm fine with that as well.
My apologies for the presumption, so, yes, I think it's a wonderful idea, Mrs. Demos, and we'll certainly put something together, hopefully, maybe even do a thing a little more, just attending a Zoom meeting, so.
Right, right, just so that we have that on our forefront. Thank you.
Yep, absolutely, you're welcome. And, Mr. Wilson, any questions or comments concerning tonight's consent agenda?
Nothing on the consent agenda.
Great, thank you. And, Mr. Stadman?
No, I had no questions or comments.
Okay, seeing none, what is the pleasure of the board at this time regarding tonight's consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to accept tonight's consent agenda.
Second that.
I have a motion and a second to approve tonight's consent agenda. Mr. Cutlass, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Demos, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Stadman, how do you vote?
Aye.
And the Chair votes as well, with one note, I believe, I forgot to mention, we had a motion and a second, motion by Mrs. Demos and second by Mr. Stadman, just to clarify the record. Moving on to committee reports, was on my daily walk the other day, was very excited, Mr. Cutlass, to see some steel going up. I think there's a field house, and it looks like they're even working on a gym now over there at the Ryan School in the back, so very excited for you to give the community your update regarding the elementary school building project.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, it is very exciting. The steel's almost all done at the, at the field house and the concession stand, and they have started the administrative wing and the gym over there, the cranes are up, and Consigliere's doing a great job. They probably have a hundred guys on site every day doing that work. We're still on budget, we're still on time. In fact, recently, the Consigliere came to the committee, and they may want to knock the Senate School down early, which means we have to relocate Brenda and Chris and the rest of the staff, and they're working on that, they're developing a plan to do that, and that's bad for them, but good sign for us to move ahead with the project. But everything's going well so far with that, no complaints. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Excellent, thank you for your report. There's no update regarding the Tewksbury Education Foundation. That brings us to the Tewksbury CPAC. Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, so we did have a meeting in October where there were some issues discussed, nothing, nothing significant or crazy that was raised. It was a pretty nice meeting. And then Rick held a, in early November, I guess I'll call it a parents' night, but they had received a bunch of questions ahead of the event. We had some guest speakers, talked a lot about remote learning and how it was going and some of the challenges, and answered a lot of parents' questions. You know, the, I guess, the only, you know, thing some of the participants weren't happy about was they wanted to ask live questions. And as you know, that some of the issues can be pretty complex, so we had tried to gather as many questions as we could ahead of time, answer all those questions on that night, and we really weren't, we didn't have the time, or we're in a position where then fielding questions on the fly would have been beneficial. So, we'll set up another family night. I believe there's going to be another one next month, and we will tackle questions, and it's sort of geared to a specific topic, so I will provide more updates when I have them.
Great, thank you, Mr. Wilson. And the wellness, Mr. Stadman?
We've had no meetings.
Great, thank you, sir.
Things planned.
I would now like to turn it over to Mrs. Demos regarding our policy changes, proposals, and adoptions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight's policy recommendation is in regards to our policy of IHBG. It's our homeschooling policy. We have, the policy is recommended for revision from the Tewksbury Public Schools. This is an informational reading, this is our very first reading of this policy, and it's IHBG homeschooling. We propose that the changes reflected should say, "The Massachusetts General Law requires that the Tewksbury School Committee to determine that a homeschooling program meet the minimum standards established for public schools and the Commonwealth prior to approving such a program. When a parent guardian residing in Tewksbury with a verified student below the age of sixteen wants to establish a home-based educational program for his or her child, the following procedures shall be followed in accordance with the law. Prior to removing the child from a public school, or if already enrolled in a Tewksbury Public School, the parent guardian must submit written notification to the superintendent's office with a proposed home-based educational program to the superintendent designate or appropriate administrator before the program is established, and must resubmit notification and a new proposal on an annual basis, as long as the child or children are being educated in a home-based environment in Tewksbury. The parent guardian must certify in writing on a form provided by the district the name, age, place of residence, and the number of hours of attendance of each child in the program. The parent guardian shall communicate or meet with the superintendent and/or designees, which may include the Assistant Superintendent, the Director of Student and Family Support, and/or the Building Principal, to review the necessary requirements of the proposed program. The superintendent shall give the notice to proceed, I'm sorry, the superintendent shall give the notice to proceed records required by law if there is probable cause to believe the program is not in compliance with the law. Factors to be considered by the superintendent designate or Tewksbury School Committee in deciding whether or not to approve a home education proposal may be: Number one, the proposed curriculum and number of hours of instruction in each proposed subjects; Number two, the competency of the parent guardian to teach the children; Number three, the specific programs, textbooks, workbooks, online resources, and other instructional aids to be used by the children in the lesson plans and teaching manuals to be used by the parent guardians; Four, mutually agreed upon progress monitoring and progress reporting, which may include periodic standardized testing of the children to ensure educational progress and the attainment of grade-level Massachusetts state standards. A student being educated in a home-based program within the district may have access to public school activities of either curricular or extracurricular nature upon approval of the superintendent. This is the first reading. We will be reading this again at our next month's meeting, and anyone that has any questions or comments or concerns regarding this policy should feel free to reach out to Chris, Brenda, or myself before the next meeting. And that's all I have for policies. And that's all I have for policies. I think you made a mistake, Chair.
My apologies. Mrs. Demos, thank you for reading that. I'm just going to check in with our colleagues if anyone has any comments or questions regarding the policy. I'll start with Mr. Cutlass.
No, I'll send Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Demos, I think you're okay. Mr. Wilson?
No, I think it's great. Looks like some good changes to sort of clean things up and work on this.
Great. And our other policy committee member, Mr. Stadman?
If, Ms. Demos, if you give a chance, can you read that again for all of us?
Your turn next.
Yeah, exactly. No, I'm all set. Thank you.
All right. Thank you both for your work. And as Mrs. Demo said, if you have any questions or comments, this is just a pause of time. Please feel free to reach out. With that, I'm going to turn the floor over to Mrs. Regan for our old business on the professional development that took place on November 3rd.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I did forget an update that I had on the next page. So I just want to remind our parents to check our district webpage often because we put an ongoing time tracker of the construction project. So if parents go to the ESBC website, they'll see a banner on the top or bar button on the top where you can see live progress of the actual building of the new school. So, wonderful and exciting update for a new school. In old business, what you have is one item here and it's informational only. It's our November 3rd full day professional development schedule. You can see that the morning was focused on curriculum work, both around in-person and remote learning models, especially in the area of assessing digital learners, I mean, not remote learners. We also had our special ed team meeting for some program planning specifically around that four-day or home care, home services, program planning. And then our aid professional development and our whole district afternoon professional development focused on our district goal of all means all and equity for all students. So you can see the aides participated in leveraging SEL for equity. And we had the honor of having Dr. Michelle Walsh work with our entire district around diversity and equity in the afternoon. So it's a great day, you know, sandwiched with some curriculum work and some SEL work for both our aides and our full staff.
Thank you, Mrs. Regan. Could you also do the new business MCAS update? And then I'll check in with our colleagues if we have any questions or comments.
Sure. What you have is a series of 2021 MCAS updates that we received. You can see the first update was September 29th, 2020. I'm not going to go through it. I highlighted some of the features for you. It's the second update I want to draw your attention to. It's the sixth page in and it has the highlighted heading Student Assessment Update, October 27th, 2020. This is an update regarding our high school MCAS testing. I highlighted this paragraph that I want to read part of. This is clarification of participation requirements for high school students, specifically our seniors, our class of 2021, and our juniors, our class of 2022. Those students must pass the required MCAS tests in order to earn their competency determination, otherwise known as the CD. Schools and districts are required to provide a January and May testing opportunity to the students in those two classes. Let me just tell you, we have 226 juniors that must participate in our ELA and MCAS testing. So this makes up for the sophomore CD testing they would have participated in. We only have two and possibly three in the next week's seniors that need to participate in that testing. We have, all of our seniors have passed, but we do have two, and as I said, possibly a third who have just transferred into the district or are coming back as a senior and they never participated in a sophomore MCAS. So predominantly, this is going to affect our junior class and a handful of seniors. If you turn the page to the calendar, which is lengthy and detailed, I'm only going to focus on a couple of pieces here. Let me just tell you, I met with the high school admin team as well as our MCAS assistant to the principal, Melanie Terribasi. She has already met the before testing requirement of the, what's called the PNP's, the personal needs profiling. If we go down to test administration, I do want to draw your attention to the fact that there will be five required testing days for these juniors, three ELA sessions and two math sessions between January 14th and February 5th. Our goal is to administer these five days over a two-week window early in January. And what we're logistically planning, and I don't have that plan fully developed to inform you of tonight, is to keep obviously our Cohort A juniors and seniors separate from our Cohort B juniors and seniors, from our C and our remote learners, but in the building on those same days. So we have a lot of planning to do. We're working with the high school admin team, our IT team, because there's some caching and other IT processes that have to be followed to bring the test. It is a legacy MCAS test, if you remember, legacy versus next generation. But it's a legacy test, delivered computer-based test. So there's still quite a bit of planning to do. I suspect in the the December meeting, I should have all of those details ready for you. At least I hope I will. Our current ninth graders, if you look onto the next page, will take the Science, Technology and Engineering Biology MCAS in June as traditionally planned. The spring schedule for grades three through eight, the three through eight MCAS across the board is not fully developed by DESI yet and certainly requires all of us to have an optimistic attitude, if you will, that the spring MCAS testing will occur. So, and then finally, you can see our 2021 MCAS alternate assessments have our, will kick off in January and will need to be submitted by end of March. So I just want to say this, as far as high school parents, juniors and seniors, our guidance team, our admin team will be visiting with all junior classes to inform them. And they've already began that process of how do we pick them back up to speed on computer-based testing with MCAS. I think our kiddos are in pretty good shape. And parents will receive a letter in the next week from myself and the building principal on these high school MCAS updates.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Regan. And I'll check in with my colleagues if they have any questions regarding the professional development or the MCAS update. I'll start with Mr. Cutlass.
I'll send Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Demos.
Brenda, I'm thinking in terms of when the seniors came in to take their SATs and one cohort was in the gym and one cohort was somewhere else, right? I think logistically it can happen again for the MCAS, but are you thinking you're going to take and bump out the high school access testing to the end of the window of opportunity so that after they take the MCAS that we would offer the access test to our older students in Tewksbury?
Yeah, the access testing can be, because we are a low incident district, we know that we have a very small amount of juniors and seniors that need the access testing. So we can really work around the MCAS schedule for them.
Right, okay.
I just want to put on your radar that clearly five days of testing will require quite a few proctors. Because again, we have to follow our protocols, right?
Right.
For our, for COVID planning, spacing, logistics, keeping them separate. We are, what we're trying to work out, and this is, you know, how will remote learning look then for the other classes during that window of time? How do we preserve some in-person time for the cohorts during those weeks? But we know five days, there will be more remote learning. So what will, you know, relevant learning and instruction look like when the majority of our high school teachers will be proctoring MCAS?
Well, because when I was reading through my packet and I saw this, it just made me think of how much of a staffing shortage, you know, we have on a day-to-day basis. And then you throw in the MCAS accommodations that many of our students require in small groups and different settings and all the cohorts. So, I do not envy you in the scheduling portion of this. So I was just making sure that it was on the radar that these access kiddos had their testing pushed back, so it wasn't overwhelming them too too much at the same time.
No, I appreciate that. And Dave certainly, you know, doesn't get away without part of this planning too, because we know MCAS is on time. And that means the transportation.
Right.
So come, come into play for those students who need the whole school day.
Right, okay.
So that's what we're working out.
Okay, well, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Demos and Mr. Stadman?
I don't have any questions or comments at this time.
Thank you, Mrs. Regan. Neither do I. Thank you for your updates. Moving on to school committee matters of interest, I'm going to start with Mr. Cutlass.
I'll send Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Mrs. Demos?
Hi, thank you. I'd really like to put on for next month for us to have maybe an update from the task force in regards to, I appreciated us getting information pushed out to the parents in regards to the state travel guidelines. So it's on everyone's forefront and reminders. But I'm thinking that with the flu season coming and the holiday season coming, I'd really like to see some protocols and and accountabilities just pushed back, pushed out again to the community as far as, you know, the masks need to cover your nose. You can't be walking around with them underneath your nose, you know, just reminder protocols coming out. But I'd also like to talk about maybe getting a report that speaks to the amount of students in each of the hybrid and remote learning academies so that we can look at the number of staffing assigned to them. I know we're going to be looking at a lot of budgetary items between now and in January. And I just really want to make sure that when we are looking at the the budget, that we really can kind of encapsulate what it looks like in those buildings. So I know I talked about two different things. I really think we need to have an update as far as the the task force and the reopening and the social distancing protocols and mask protocols and making sure that they're being implemented with fidelity in every building at every grade level. And I'd also like to talk about the class sizes around the district and the, you know, number of staffing. So we can better get a better understanding of that.
Great. Mr. Malone, can we have that put on the agenda, sir, for the December 9th meeting?
Absolutely.
I appreciate it. Thanks.
No problem. Mr. Stadman?
I do not have any matters of interest.
Okay. And Mr. Wilson?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the only thing I have is that I'd like to ask that we reconvene and go back into executive session after the meeting. Because there were some questions that I wanted to ask with regards to the employee groups and negotiations. And we just kind of ran out of time, so.
Okay, no problem. I'll just check in with my colleagues. Mr. Cutlass, you okay with that?
Yes, I am, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Demos?
Yes, I'm fine.
Okay. Mr. Stadman?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, and I am as well. I would propose, after I get through the school committee dates and future agenda, if at that point you would like to entertain one joint motion that would end the regularly scheduled meeting while also entering a motion that we, a two-part motion that we enter into executive session relative to discussions regarding our employee groups and negotiations there and something to that effect.
Okay. And just as a one other side note, Mr. Chair, I wanted to just let you know that on November 7th, we had the MASC 2020 Delegate Assembly. So we had a meeting that morning. We had a meeting actually leading up to the meeting so that the vote would go off without any hitches. I unfortunately was on the call, but when we went to the portion to vote, I wasn't able to get in and actually cast a vote. So I will forward you guys the information that they had sent to me with regards to, I believe there were two proposals, but I'll send everything to you. But it, it was good. It actually was really good. There was some good discussion and I'll forward that all to the, to the whole committee.
Great. Thank you very much. And also thank you for representing us with that. I had enough there. I lost that, Jason. Not sure. Moving on to future school committee and subcommittee meetings, our next school committee meeting will be December 9th, 2020. And the following meeting will be held January 13th, 2021 and will be a budget workshop, a first budget workshop and regular meeting. Okay, and getting a message here for, not sure. So, Mr. Wilson, as part of your motion, just to make sure we're having things documented correctly, please make sure as part of your motion to end the general meeting and to enter executive session, that it also involves that we will not be reconvening the regular meeting.
Okay.
Okay. And with that, do we have any, I know we got some future agenda items from Mrs. Demos. I'll start with her. Do you have anything further? Mrs. Demos?
No, that's it for tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Cutlass?
No, nothing, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Mr. Wilson?
I'm nothing.
Okay. And Mr. Stadman?
I'm good. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. That will conclude our regular meeting business this evening.
All right, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we end a regularly scheduled school committee meeting so that we may head into executive session to discuss matters of negotiation that we obviously will not be discussing in public. I'd also like to include in that motion that at the end of executive session, we will not be reconvening to just, to have a further school, regular school committee. This will be the end of that meeting.
Okay.
That was cool.
I have a motion and a second to end our regularly scheduled meeting that will also include us reconvening into executive session for the purpose to discuss strategies with respect of collective bargaining and employee groups and/or personnel matters. And finally, that will conclude with our business for the evening and we will not be returning to the regularly scheduled meeting as this motion, part of the motion is to end the regular meeting, regularly scheduled meeting. Mr. Cutlass, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Demos, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Stadman, how do you vote?
Aye.
The chair votes aye as well. Thank you for attending this evening and we will see you in December.